Confusing, that's why.
The readings from November 2nd? Anybody have a comment?
I just had a question on... Third page, fourth page, which is the board members review of site plan.
On what page?
Fielded, that number's 1, 3, 4, 6, 8, and 10 are consideration, da-da-da-da, and not applicable. I don't remember agreeing to that. It might just be my memory, but...
Who's that on the desk under?
When I look at the...
Site plan, when we discussed the site plan?
Yeah.
And it does, I just took a quick look at it. And some of the things seem like they should be applicable, and I don't know that we would just...
We pull out the site plan.
If you all remember... I mean, we don't know, location lighting sites, general site, but they're told there's lighting in the signs. I mean, you know, no other signs of lighting, or less than signs of lighting, and that should be...
We shouldn't ignore that requirement. And the same thing with 3.
Well, he didn't have any signs of lighting on his plans though.
Right.
That's why we said it didn't apply.
Well, it... No lighting? I thought it was just generator light. I mean, it gotta have some lighting.
The generator was for the well, he said.
There's no lighting?
They're only gonna work during the day, because they're not in the building, they're outside. There was no lighting on the site plan?
Okay. And let's just take another quick look at this, off-street parking and loading. Isn't there gonna be loading and... I mean, they're gonna be loading the trucks, right?
Right, but it'll be unpermitted.
So shouldn't that be indicated on the... Isn't that part of the site plan of where that loading appears?
It's gonna, well, it's gonna vary, vary as to where they're working.
Because there's no set locations, that's what that would be. And then 4, acquisition of pedestrian traffic access and circulation, da-da-da, control of intersections with vehicular traffic, and overall pedestrian convenience. I mean, there will be intersections at the access point. Doesn't that need to... Be considered?
Is that one with reference though to pedestrians?
Intersection, and overall pedestrian traffic access. So you think this whole thing has to do with pedestrian traffic?
Yes.
Okay. Water supply, water supply and sewage disposal.
You said there wasn't gonna be...
Don't they have...
Well, they use potables.
Yeah, you said there was gonna be a pool below.
Yeah, but it wasn't as good as a problem.
And that actually stated in the site plan, because if they don't state it, then we probably shouldn't, we should consider it, have to consider it.
That would be something that the codes office would treat, that he would have to go in before they would allow it on the site. It's not really part of, it's not a permanent structure, so it wouldn't have to be on the site plan.
Oh, you're saying that they wouldn't have, they just have to indicate?
They'd have to go through groups to get it.
Yeah, I guess they would just have to indicate that in the plan, that that is how they're gonna do it. Maybe you don't have to show it in a drawing, but just indicate that that's what... Adequacy of fire lanes.
And there's no structure there, so...
So there's no fire lanes in a situation like this? I don't know, I'm just, I don't know when you need a fire lane.
When you have buildings.
Right? And people, I mean, the whole purpose of a fire lane is for trucks to get in if there's a fire. You can have a fire...
You could have a forest fire.
You can have a fire, are you saying because there's no...
And I'm sure there will be, I mean, roadways that they'll build to access where they're mining. But again, that may vary too, depending on where they're working.
So the idea of a fire lane would be in a developed property, that you need to be able to have something so that you're not going through people's backyards to get to? But this is all open, so it wouldn't be...
Right, because, you know, this site plan thing, it goes, if there's a subdivision, or if there's a grocery store going in, or a 7-Eleven, this all is inclusive, it talks all about that, and some things are gonna affect, you know, it depends on what you're talking about.
And then I guess the last from 10, size location, recent use of required open space, and acquises such open space to preserve scenic views and other natural features, provide suitable screening and buffering. And that is something that is required, right, providing suitable screening and buffering, so I don't know that that should be ignored.
Well, I think that's something that was on his, was on his site as far as to what the DEC required, or we required for our end use reservations.
I'm just saying that I don't think we should consider that in a number that is not of consequence, or review.
So 10, you're ready to change that one?
Yeah, put it just above 11 and 12, one below, right? Take 10 out of here, put it down here, right?
All right.
And that would be referencing the trees? Yeah, actually, number 7 down below kind of references that.
Yes, he addressed that in his, yeah.
So there's no required open space to preserve scenic views?
Yeah, I think 10, it's talking about open space, and 7 is talking more about requirement of trees and shrubs and other landscaping. That's probably why we said 10 wasn't needed.
Because the buffering is being addressed in 7.
Yeah. So what do you wanna do, turn up a buzzer, still put it below?
If we're not requiring use of open space, when would we be requiring...
For example, when we have the pad, that's a situation.
As opposed to buffering, it's a requirement, that's like for a PDD, if you're gonna require the developer to leave some open space, and we're not requiring that in that number.
Or like in a cluster development or something, where the homes are allowed to be closer together than normally required, then you need to require, or then you can require some open space to accommodate that.
Okay.
Okay?
I guess we can leave it the way you had it.
So just, are you comfortable with it?
That's a good exercise.
I just didn't remember that going.
That's fine.
And the only thing that I saw was on the next page, at the very bottom, at the 4th line up, 38/104 study and inquire?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's all I found. Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, over. Under, it starts with Kristy Smith. Okay, approach the board. Okay, the applicant's plans to build a home in a large parcel they own along Markville Road in the Hannibal School District, period. I just made a different sentence, I just stopped.
Okay.
And then the purchase, and the purchase of the subdivision, that's all I did.
Okay, that's easy.
Okay? Anything, Vern?
I just had a question on the first page. This is more of a question than anything else. I wonder if it would be good to say a regularly scheduled meeting?
Okay.
And maybe all of us do that.
The very first, a regularly scheduled meeting?
That way, you know, nobody could come back and say, "Why did you have that meeting?" Well, it's a regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay. And then one set out on the first Monday for the special meeting?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't know that I would call it a special meeting, just because it wasn't... Oh, you mean, if we have an additional one?
Yeah, maybe call it a rescheduled meeting, or something like that.
Describe it somehow.
Yeah.
Good.
Motion to accept the minutes?
Are you done, Sue? Who you are?
Yeah, oh, yes.
I thought I had another one here, oh, I'll just say that. Well, on the, this page here, the second from the last, bottom middle, Mrs. Welch also asked what were intersections, should be were, isn't it? Where there was, you see that? I think that's all I had.
Oh, yeah, I hear somebody, was.
Okay.
Okay? Make a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make it.
That's second.
All right.
Should we get Alice? Steve Keeling?
Yes, I'm Steve Keeling. I'd like to talk a little bit about the fee schedule for the subdivision.
Okay.
I know, I think it was last year we raised them, and I think that the first fee of $200 is good, but I think the added 50 for each plot seems a little excessive. And even the major is 500 and 100 for each parcel. I guess I should've known more about it, being on the other board, but they kinda slipped by me. I wondered what the board's opinion was.
We talked about it, but we never made a formal motion to put in a change.
So how would we...
The minor subdivision right now is 200 dollars for the mine, and once they're approved, then they pay 50 dollars per lot that was created. A major subdivision is...
So if you create four lots, you pay the additional 200?
Yes.
So total of four?
Yes, for a minor subdivision. For a major subdivision, it's 500 dollars for the application, then it's a 100 or 150? Is it 100 or 150?
Oh, I should've brought the 400.
It's 100 dollars per lot on a major subdivision of four lots. And you're thinking the minor subdivision should be adjusted, or both?
I think both, though.
What was it before? I forgot.
It was 100.
Just this flat 100 and no additional?
I can't remember, I don't take the applications. I think it was, the only thing that changed was the...
Additional?
Yeah, the after the lots.
But I think the original cost was less too. It hadn't been adjusted in quite a while, and I know Leslie did some research with the other, some of the other towns, and...
Yeah, comparing, yeah.
Did we as a planning board make a recommendation to the town board?
They gave it to us to look through the whole thing, and we recommended it, but we didn't, nobody had come through yet, and it hadn't been applied. It wasn't until applicants started coming in front of the board that it became an issue, that now all of a sudden we have to collect a fee afterwards. And it seemed, there was different opinions were coming about...
So who decides on the, I mean, the town board?
The town board.
The town board would resolve it, yeah.
So this is something the town board has already...
Approved.
So you should be going back to the town board.
Well, I'm going to, but I wanted your recommendation too, what you thought.
Joan?
I believe the zoning commission was asked to also look at the fee schedule. And as you said earlier, I think Leslie and some others contacted other municipalities just to see what was comparable. And I think that's how that fee schedule came about.
I don't have the...
And of course, the town board then adopts them based on recommendations.
Well, if people are concerned about it, maybe we ought to revisit it, or just, I mean, it's not our jurisdiction, but...
We could make a recommendation to the town board if you know, if it's something you felt strongly about.
So before, it was 100 dollars for the subdivision?
I can't remember if it was 100, if it was 200.
But there's 100 for a minor, wasn't it? Wasn't it 100 for a minor? I thought so, I'm not positive.
And there was no additional charge for this, so it went from 100 dollars to like a potential 400 dollars?
Yep.
If you do four, if you divide into fours.
See, minor subdivision, three lots or less, without new roads or utilities is 200.
Like the short...
Plus 50 dollars.
That was a parcel that's been in their family for many years.
Right.
And now they're just subdividing it, and they're gonna have to pay additional, they're not gonna develop it, they're just gonna change the ownership. And that's where it became, some people were noticing that that was a high fee, and is it really necessary?
Yeah, that is the reason for, I mean, it's not like we're doing, no, but I'm saying...
Well, part of it is for...
Mail.
The mail, you know, covering some of the costs of the town to, because we send out...
Registered drivers.
And then registered drivers, and...
And it 100 for even a...
Your time that's involved, I know Lisa actually, actually did a report with one of the subdivisions about the time that it took her to do that, and then the amount of money for that particular postage. Just to give you an idea of what it was about.
That would be a good backup for it, yeah, because our time is free, so...
Right, I could pull that off, I have that.
Yeah, but it costs money to have the building open and heated at night, and, I mean, those, none of those things were...
No, I didn't include any of that.
Included, but, you know, it all costs the town, if they have to plow the parking lot for us again that night or something.
And you think if something is divided into four versus two, it's more work on your part, so that should be a little bit more expensive than...
No, it wasn't four or two, it was, the prices hadn't changed in a long time, and the cost of actually sending the letters out is what was...
More than double.
Yeah, no, I can say going from 100 to 200, but then that 50 dollars for each, I'm wondering whether that, maybe that should be looked at, because is it more complex there, and it costs more time?
We didn't change the process, the fee went up, but we didn't change any of the process of what you guys do in the subdivision and review. When you...
No, I mean, for your time in dealing with the client or whatever, do you spend more time if it's like four versus three versus two?
The seeker has increased the amount of time too, having to go through the new forms, and go online and find it, and print it out, and then if there's anything that's questionable that we haven't already hammered out, is showing up on every single one because of the area we live in, and that creates extra research, and dig up FEMA maps, or so there is...
Oh yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure all that's, I just meant, whether it's four lots or two lots, is it, should that be a differential? Should you be paying more if you have four lots versus two lots, is what I was looking at? Is it more work, or more costly, or...
I think if it's a major subdivision, that's gonna be developed, where you're gonna have...
For sure, that would be...
Is that the additional charge for that would make sense?
I'm thinking of the minor subdivision.
It's actually a two-part process to that major subdivision, so...
Plenary and final plan for the 60 days in between.
And that takes a lot of time, the major PDDs should be more expensive than me.
And that's not just my time, then, that's the assessor's time, because she gets involved at that point when it's a subdivision for the roads, and how to split up the cost of development fees.
And see, and here the major, and this was always, whether it be a minor or a major, and here it's got three lots or less without new roads or utilities.
So minor, it could not be four, it would only be three, is that what you're thinking, it went up to four?
Three lots or less without new roads or utilities, sort of like they're doing, okay? They're not gonna develop, this is gonna be a major subdivision. We did change that, I think. Yes, and a major subdivision, it doesn't say anything about that, with or without new roads. And maybe that should be a distinction. I thought we did do that. We talked about it, because that was always an issue, because if you had a major subdivision, and you were gonna have, you know, you had 100 acres, and you were gonna have a big subdivision with roads and homes and stuff every two acres, that would certainly be different than if you were gonna do a major one, like we had that one, and then he decided, "No, I'm not gonna do that." He was gonna be up into this 100, it was gonna cost him like, of his own land, 900 dollars or something to do it, to subdivide it. And there was no new roads, he wanted to divide his own land to give it to his kids.
When it was gonna be more than three?
And it was, yes.
There's four?
So he was gonna do four.
Yeah, see, maybe we should make the minor go up to four.
So... Oh, I see.
And then it would be cheaper for the person who's just doing it in there.
I think, well, if we're gonna do any kind of a recommendation, we better...
I wouldn't do it off the cuff, I think we're probably...
Yeah. Firstly, I would recommend that we recommend anything unless we have the full scope of what's involved. Like, what are the other towns doing?
Yeah.
And we did get, we did go to Hannibal, I think, town of Hannibal, we got...
Yeah, but we as a board haven't seen it. You maybe have a zone, but we haven't.
It'd be nice to see the results of that, what the other towns are doing. Because I guess my concern would be for the minor subdivisions, for the average family that wants to split, to give, to like the people that came before, you know, you don't want to have to spend 400 dollars plus the surveyor, you know, it's like...
Just to divide.
Just to divide the land to give to your kids or something, you know, it's...
What about lot line adjustment, do we charge for that?
Yes, that because it's a minor subdivision, so that gets into the 200, yeah.
I think it was.
But there's no lots or anything else.
There's no B after the fact, because they haven't created anything yet.
So we really, we should probably, we should look at this, and, you know, all right, what are the scenarios? You could do a sub, for the minor or major. But I always, I did always question, we did, about, you know... The major without new roads, I think we talked about, maybe not making that such a substantial one, but...
May I add, panel chair?
Yes.
Just, just a thought, because it's really the town board that might ask the planning board to research this, am I right, Steve?
I would guess, yes.
So then maybe that would be something Steve would present to the town board, and the town board might say, "Okay, let's ask the planning board to do this."
Might be a solid...
Or convey recommendations or something.
Right, I don't think we should offer to do anything.
I think it would come from the town board.
Okay, all right.
Right, I hear your concern. If you're concerned as a board member, or are you concerned because...
Both, as a citizen.
Right, because, yeah, well, that would be a thought, so you will have it go to the town board. And then the town board would decide whether to have the planning board...
Recommend for you guys to look into it.
Right, that would be a suggestion.
Contact Leslie, and she'll share her information.
Yeah, the backup for coming up, because you weren't involved in that.
Because she did probably get a research for that, I think.
I'm sure she did, yeah.
So, okay. All right, you're welcome. Carolyn Warman?
Yes. What I've done is recently, there's been two items I've heard of about sales tax. And one was in a letter from Kimberly Seal related to the application for the mine and the justification. And one was in, I went to a town board meeting, Randy Lawrence provided a report of the sales tax revenue that was provided by the county to the town of Sterling. So that it caught my attention, and I got curious, so I did some research about sales tax in order to get smarter about it myself, as well as I hope to provide input to the board just from a concerned citizen that's learning the process, without doing anything more than that. So this is what I found, and I'll let you decide whether you wanna just accept it now and read it later, or if you have any questions for me now, up to you guys. Right now, just input.
Thank you. Or if you have any information, feel free. Jeff Cooper's, Cooper's?
Yeah, I'm embarrassed. Yeah, I just wanted to, I sent a letter kind of implying this is Steve's letter from that last board meeting on the mine, just wanted to make sure that that's on the record. You guys will look at it, if that's all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bob and Allen, Jim?
I was gonna ask the same thing, so we go all the way through the letter.
All right, thank you.
I will say this, you guys just spent a lot of time on that, it's very thorough and long.
We care, we care.
Ms. Fisher?
In a minute, you speak about the three firms, engineering firms, who informed of your decision to hire the, I forget, the Crady Manning group. I filed a FOIL, and I got no response, did the letter aloud. If the minutes indicate you were hoping to have a report by this meeting, you know, what's the status on the traffic study?
They had started the traffic study, everything was put on hold.
When did you make that decision, did you have a meeting?
At the last meeting.
Well, we made...
Decided who to choose.
Choose.
I contacted them, they were beginning the scheduling stage, and then everything came to a stop, we...
Because of the lawsuit?
Because of the Article 78, we stopped.
So when did you make that decision as a board, did you have a meeting?
It wasn't our decision, it was the attorney's decision.
Attorney said that.
We had nothing to do with that.
Oh, okay, because I didn't see it in the minutes, so I didn't know what's happening. So basically, the study is not proceeding?
No, not proceeding.
But there was a letter sent to, to the firms after the scene?
Yes, nothing to the firms after that meeting. There was one letter sent out initially, which you received through the FOIL back when, which was contacted to submit a proposal.
So when you contacted the three firms, that was not done, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
To tell them that they didn't get the draft?
Yeah, that was on my phone, I called them and talked to each one of them.
So Lo Patrick was signed with Crady Manning?
No, Patrick is outside by the town.
Okay, so the town's not, then he's not engaged any debt yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Mira Watts, what question?
I'm just trying to look up your answer on sales tax. If you could go to the website. One, I read it in the minutes, and I know that when I made my discussion about whether or not, the digging, and whether or not my creative may be something like that, I recall that we actually had a discussion about the mine's elevation, but I know that we had a lot of discussion about it in earlier time, so it might be a response to my concern, but I don't remember that we actually had that discussion during my, did that presentation. So, that's why I asked the question, because it does say the high floor elevation of the mine is 378 above sea level, and the Sterling Creek is 360 above sea level, difference of 17 feet, and I'm lucky scenario to assess, but I don't remember us saying that when I was talking about it. But I know that we had a lot of concern about the level of it at an earlier point in the meeting and stuff.
Right here, did they say, did somebody state at the meeting last time that the elevation of the mine is 378 feet above sea level, and the Sterling Creek is 360 above sea level?
Right, the sentence before that talks about Linda Bishop commenting on it, so there was a discussion.
A special thinking.
Yeah, I remember you commenting on it, but, yeah, I don't remember that either, that saying...
It wasn't when I was doing it, it was at an earlier part of the meeting that it was discussed and that, and so I guess I didn't tie, as you said, 17 feet difference into my question. My question was whether or any other mines not in the town still, or whether or not this could have been before, or because of, oh, if your application would be from it, but in other parts of the state or country, because at the time, a couple of months ago, there was a mine that was along a river that out west, and had a spill, and affected huge river, and, you know, that's what, I want to know how this particular mine might affect that pretty well. But there was a lot of discussion about how high, but you did have, and early prior meeting, but I... but I don't think it was actually when I had that question. But it does answer that, as long as they don't dig below water level.
I don't remember that question.
And they stayed above the water level, then I guess we might not have been creating any kind of leak or anything. But, you know, I don't remember that discussion actually occurring after the time that I was asking the question.
Okay.
And I guess one more thing is that sales tax is its only animal.
Yes.
And there are specific exemptions.
Yes, that's what I referred to in there.
Yes, so I didn't read the whole thing there.
Yes, I referred to it.
Personal property is subject to sales tax, it's a burden, unless it's.
It comes on how it's used.
Yes.
If it becomes a raw material for a batch plant creating concrete.
Yes.
Then the gravel or the sand is exempt, the concrete is taxable.
Yes, the ingots, the retaining three-by-three bed metal would be subject to sales tax, they're also exempt.
Yeah, there is no guarantee that every purchase of sand or gravel is taxable. It is most likely that none of it would be taxable coming out of the mine.
If it's used in your driveway, the way you had it used in your driveway.
Not at harm.
You would, well, you wouldn't have had sales tax out of it because it's considered capital improvement.
So governments, all tax exempt, if it's used from either town of Sterling or the village of Fairhaven or Cuba County, it's exempt, no sales tax. If it's used as a raw material in someone else's production, concrete or construction someplace else, it's exempt to the town of Sterling. Wayne County may be charged tax if it gets used over in a casino in Galway. So that there's, if you have questions about sales tax.
If you make those road dividers, if you go down private property, not a state then, then those road dividers would be subject to sales tax for private use, not government use.
But the person that manufactures the dividers gets the sales tax, not the mine. So it's complicated, that was when you mentioned, specific exemptions.
There's a point that you're trying to make.
It would be.
That when he sells gravel, he's not always going to collect sales tax.
He most often would not need to collect sales tax, because there would be an exemption.
But if the majority of this gravel went to individuals in the town of Sterling for their driveway, he would then collect sales tax.
Yeah, for a driveway, I believe there would be one for a driveway. It's only one for a tangible personal property. You create an ingot, you create a divider, you create a desk, you create a tangible piece of property that you can pick up and move again. But rocks are rocks and you can't identify one rock from another when it's spoken to a pile of rocks. And the end is not subject to sales tax like that.
Yeah, because that's.
Yeah, so mining, so mining is a production of concrete. And all sales from the mine are taxable unless the purchaser provides a tax-exempt certificate.
Right.
So governments are exempt, farms are exempt, United Nation is exempt, certain not-for-profits are exempt. However, if the sand or gravel becomes a raw material for someone else's use and they create a product, the sand or gravel is exempt. And that final end product, the concrete, the ingots, the road barriers is what gets paid sales tax. And where that is used, so if they're used in Wayne County, Wayne County gets the benefit of the sales tax. Cuba County, therefore town of Sterling, gets nothing.
And Wayne County, because it's a county, is exempt. And it's only if it's on a person's private property, like Ontario Orchards, that you put it on your property and you're not exempt from, you're not a proper realization, you're a for-profit company and you're not a government, and for you, that tangible personal property that can be picked up and moved someplace else, that ends up, that becomes subject to sales tax, but not sploosed into your ground. So there's hardly any sales tax.
Why, why would it go down my driveway? And I don't have a tax-exempt certificate going on my driveway, why isn't that taxed?
It's part of the land. It's part of the land. I think it might be a thing.
Whether it would ever be taxed then?
Unless you're a farm.
Unless you're a farm, right.
I could see if it's a farm, but I think if it goes on my driveway, I'm paying a tax on it, right, Steve?
I think you are, if you're.
All right.
If you're, if you're not exempt use and you're located in Cuba County, Cuba County gets it. You pay the sales tax, Cuba County gets it. My comment about Wayne County is if there's a casino built in Wayne County and there's lots of sand and gravel that's trucked to a plant that's going to use it in Wayne County, Wayne County gets the benefit of it, not Cuba County.
So we're, I think the conclusion is, we don't know how much sales tax he's going to collect. Because we don't know where he ultimately is going to sell the majority of his product.
Yes, yes, yes. So, and let me take it one step while we get this whole thing opened up. Please read this, because the other thing that I have learned from discussions with Randy and Gerald on the county treasurer's offices, that Cuba County gets sales tax. Fifty percent of that goes to the county, twenty percent goes to the city of Auburn, thirty percent goes to towns and villages. And of that thirty percent, only six percent comes to the town of Sterling. So it's not determined by if the mine collects twenty thousand dollars, town of Sterling does not get that much, it's percent, 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 percent.
The county gets biggest amount.
Yes, yes, they do, yes.
So then it gets the real answer, is we're likely to get very little as opposed to a lot.
Yes.
That's the way it works. The county gets the blue shell.
Yes.
But it's sales.
Trickle down.
Very little.
And to do a fuel pass or a trucking equipment?
Yes, I do, it's a major fair.
There are all the hot rocks, they're prepared food. You get sales tax for every dollar.
Yes.
Could I get a further clarification on my earlier question?
But individuals like me.
Crazy.
They don't get it.
You know.
I get a further clarification. You indicated that the study, the traffic study is on hold. Is there, is there a determined date as to when that would be done?
No, there's no contract signed with Creighton Manning, so.
There's no contract signed?
As far as I know, we're not doing anything right.
As far as you're not doing anything right?
In order for them to do something, a contract has to be signed, money has to be put in account.
And if that were to take place, you would come back to the meeting and you would make the decision in the meeting? Or would you consider that decision to hire Creighton Manning and all the town attorney would have to do is say, yeah, do it, you do it without me? Or would you, do you have a meeting to make the decision?
Yeah, we've already made this decision, so it would be.
If it's been put on hold, in the town, it gets put on hold, I guess, to do the traffic, I guess, to town of Sterling.
We've already chosen.
Okay, so I'm confused. So then, so in other words, how would we, how would anyone ever, how would the public find out whether or not the study goes forward? Because obviously many of us would be very interested in what the results of the study are, because, you know, they may be, they may be comforting or they may be disquieting. It's, we don't know.
We don't know, we don't know, we don't know anything right now.
Okay, well, the point is, would it be possible for you to, like, post it or something if you do make the decision to go forward or something?
No, it's going to go forward, right? When the lawyer says it can go forward. When we get the results of the study, then that becomes eventually your information.
Well.
You're not going to know when the.
Well, instead of signing contract, the contract would be foiled hold. The question is, how would I know when you sign the contract? So I mean, right, to foil Lisa every week going, hi, is there a contract? I mean, if you, if instead you have a, you make a, you say that when the contract goes out, there would be an announcement?
As long as it's in litigation, there's, I don't believe that there's going to be anything else.
Okay, so that's, that was the communication to the veteran, was that during the litigation it will not go forward?
As far as I know, everything's on hold until.
So until the end of litigation? Okay, that's, that's what I was trying to clarify, whether he had given you any end date or not, you know, okay. The second thing was, I recall that there was a discussion that Member Lemon has sent to contact D E C for further information about many of the things in the report. Did you get the opportunity to?
No, I didn't.
Do not.
So that would be on hold as well because of your, Article seventy-eight?
Right, well, that'd be, there's.
You're included, right?
Yes. Okay, I thought that was, that that's an intention of the board to get that information, so will you be going forward, will you be having?
But when the whole thing starts up again, but we don't know what's going to happen as a result of the lawsuit. I'm really busy.
No, no, I was going to say, couldn't, couldn't, couldn't the clerk do that for you, obviously?
Do what?
Nope, we're on hold, we're, we're supposed to be on hold, we're totally on hold with everything.
Okay, I didn't understand it, I thought you meant that you were only on hold with the traffic study.
No, no, I haven't.
You're saying then that therefore you are not going to be deliberating this at all until, okay. Because that's a decision that you could or could not make, you don't have to, you could go forward. Um, maybe.
We've been advised not to do anything.
Depends on what you decide. But you can advise, okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, you should, sorry.
Because I, I was going to say, we could make a decision here tonight not to approve the special permit. We could do that, couldn't we?
No, no, we're not doing it, no, we can't do it.
I didn't want to.
No, you're not, the planning board is being sued, is not being sued for its actions in the mine, it's being sued for its actions with respect to free information on the awful lethal. The zoning board is being sued for its actions with respect to the mine. You have the right to do whatever you want, your counsel is telling you not to do anything, that's one of the options you have, and that's the option you would leave officially chosen. But it would be possible for you to continue to do what you wanted to do and make your decision pending, you know, so. But you could also instead make the decision, which you cared in hand, to do nothing until the lawsuit's lifted. So I just wanted to, yeah, that's just wanted to know what the decision was, that's why I'm here. Thank you very much.
Any further questions or comments? If not, call for adjournment.
Well, I have a question. Maybe Lisa knows, or if not, can you ask the attorney about this lawsuit?
The attorney said any discussion of anything to do with the lawsuit needs to be done in an executive session, not during the opening meeting. So if you want to talk about that, the four of you can go into, do it by motion.
Right.
And then leave and talk this class and come back.
Should we adjourn the meeting first?
No, you have to do that during the meeting.
All right, let's do it then.
The way to do it is, you have to do a motion, you go into executive session.
What, a motion to go into?
I make that motion to go in executive. To this party.
Does that mean that we?
I'll say it for November, you know, back.
They go to the other room.
Who's second, I'm sorry?
David.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So the sales tax.
The old planning office is open, so we can go in there and get shut the door.
Are you calling someone or?
No, she can't, just now.
Okay.
Are we adjourned next meeting?
No.
No. No, we're. You can, you can come back. So we're, we're. Especially, yeah. The ten thirty here, it's, 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 it's. Another one. What's your chip? Oh, yeah. Yeah. Okay. Sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's, it's, it's. I'm sorry. 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 Right. Yeah. It's sort of, we get a lot of. Yeah. I'm, I'm. I'm sorry. 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 Yes, you're right. I'm sorry. 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 Where'd you get? I'm sorry. 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 It's very complicated when you don't have to do this. Different players can't do this. They 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 can't do this. It's just a little. It's right. It's right. It's right. It's just a mode of territory. But I would add, I can do more. But you don't have. Smart. No, but we, we, we always. So what? So it's enough to. Question. It's got. I'm getting used to it. I'm really. Probably going to get another. Oh. What was the other question? You know, you gave the choice. It is lower. I just, I should do the whole, the whole. Because. Rockfish. Frash. I should have. I never. So. And shopping. I should. I should. Money. By buying. In other words, it shows. What's that? The point is, it shows that they're communicating each other. You won't. No, you don't understand. They are totally accounting each other. Yeah. It's just. If they. But that's the. And that's their. They're trying to. It's like she was a blessing. So. You're. I. 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 So if they're. 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 You're. 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 I don't love it. You want. I'm just. I'm just. No, you're just in love. I'm like. I'm. Well, we can ask them. They can't. Good enough. Right. It's just. Well, it's still. It just needs a small. But they, they're really not. It was still shared, so it's not. No. It's not. But it's not. It's not. Like, just take it, let's take this present. Let's take. Let's take. So. You're in. You're active. I'm serious. I'm letting it wrap in there. It's just very sad. I'm wondering. I. So I took a. I'm the hugger. I'm the planter. So they actually can sit there and. I shared one hardly ever since. I know. It's clever. It's clever. I'm like. I'm like. So. So. It's annoying because. It's like. It's. I'm. I'm. No. I'm. I believe in technology. It's smart. If I assume. How do you know if I'm your? I don't think you almost do. We've got a lot of. Right. I have to assume that everything is, I have just something. It's. It's. Yeah. It's something. All of the. All of the. All of the. So. 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 That's. It's right. Well, the thing is, with the. With the stamp. It's not. It's not. It's not. It's not. It's not. It's not. It's. You need to have. You should have several. It's. 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 I want. I want. And. And. I'm. Yeah. It's true. I'm. I think this. She. I found that. Right. You're. Well. 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 So. I. 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 Some. So. I. I. I don't know. Sales tax, it's in here. I think you know, I mean, you're right. If you're. If they don't want sales tax. Because sales tax, I, I. I think they. So. We don't have substantial. I know you're. We don't have a lot of. Mine. Our. And. In terms, and they would drop. And wishing from, maybe you brought out your plans. By this. Here's my. A. A. Place. Even. It's the industry. And commercial. That adds. Where its residential takes. Right, that's supposed to happen. They went up and sort of. And that's. And now. Now. The. The. Services. So they were. So. So. And. I just. And. There's such a thing as. I. 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 And. Right, but see, they would still, but they would still change. I know. And. And it's not a state account. It's a state, it's not for you. It's. Future. The line would be drawn. It's. Future. That's. Right. Sticking the same type of. And. So if you should be a role or a. Or. We would. Or. Small. For. Maybe. I don't know. I think the track to the power. Sales. Yes. But. 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 Because they want you to go to. The. The. Higher. And. Mines. And what the state is. So they want that. But there are different types of. And. Because in the drop. They. So. 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 I think that. I. For. For. Like. What they say. I think. I. Where I stand. To. And. You're going to go to the. Where. In the. Control. All the. Everybody is. Don't. We. Don't. Well. They put, because they're violation of our. Caroline. In the bigger scheme of things. Yes. Okay. I was. Because I respect. And he says. So. I was. And. This is. Right. I'm. Just. Here. In fact, if you before. And it comes to. Their. And he. And. Even me. And several. And. 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 And he said, I cannot. Put through. But. But. And she said, right, go to the zone. And I. I. State. I chose to. To. I. However. Because I have. I. Generation. They're all safe. I recognize. The. And I. I. Listen. Or. Did this to. Take over the. I. I. You can take over. And. Sterling. More. More. I have. What you are. With. And. Would never. I was. In the nineteen fifty's. But I was. More. So. How. Somebody said, there will be a bar there someday. Or. Who is. No, no, even. So. So. And. Distribution. Or. Or. Was like. This is. For. Why not? Falling. The way. Keeps doing the way it is. I just. Find that. His. Land. Right. For. So. I. I. More. No. 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 We. I. So. I. Now. I. What you're saying. But I have to smile. Because it was. I was. To get any kind of. And now you're. And we would. Almost. No. We would. It was nineteen ninety seven. But. Yeah. Believe me. Yeah. They were. It's. Same. It's. Which. Not. Easy. There. So. But. But. They're saying. So again, I didn't. That a fish. And I'm delighted. Because. If you. Not. As. A fish. With. The. Zone. Which. And. You. Have. And. And. People should say. I'm going to do. Meaning when you. High. Traps. Because that's what was going on. It's. It's. So. We. This. I. This. But. The. Nineteen ninety seven. Then. And I'm in the same. Then they retain. And. They buy it. And. Right. Maritor. Yes. But. I. What do you mind? And I. Start. Because I'm. I'm. Two thousand and ten. It's awesome. Right. I was. Population. So I haven't had anybody yet that. Have. How. Yes. This is. Population. I mean, they. They. Okay. Well. If. About. Pause. If the population goes down. You can't say, well, because of the zone. I. I'm not positioned to respond. Yeah. 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 Deep. And. Very. Financially. Defi. I mean, I. My. My. And. And my daughter. And now. There are. There's a lot of. It's. It's not. And now we've lost another baby. We. But the thing is, is that. I'm really. Those are the big players. That have just positive. Financial. And. Well. Right. For. Space. This could be. I mean, for a big fish. I asked. I. I. I don't know. I mean. Only take it over. Well. Even. This. Even they. Take it over. Oh, yeah. Did we? Well. But. But. Well. Do. Okay. You take it. But you don't. You can do that with. No. Unfortunately. No. You. Contract. Change. For. You. I. I. And. She was. He. He. That's. His. My. Oh. So. Tell. I. 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 One of the. Rules says it's not like. The. So. I. 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 I've got. I got. A lot. Of. Things. Except. Oh. She doesn't. She doesn't. I'm. 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 Oh. Yes. You. Do. That's. I'm. And I'm. I'm. Oh. Then I. 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 Excuse me, did you? Did you follow that? John? Yes. I believe they did, but there was too much talking going on right here. Well, I just wanted to check. Thank you. I. 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 Watch. This is. I. I. Supposed to have at least some. For people. The audience. Yeah. We think we're relatively calm. You should see the game. Before the tape. It was. It was. A total. Yelling. Screaming.